And we have a quorum, so I'm calling this meeting to order. Mr. Peterson will not be joining us today. We know his family is going through quite a bit and we wish them the very best and they are in our thoughts and prayers. But he will not be joining us today. And for the folks that are watching online, this is a workshop. So although we won't be as formal as we are in council meetings, I would encourage each of the speakers and council members. It's a good call and we'll appreciate it if you will turn your mic off if you are not talking. That helps with feedback and when you are speaking, let's make sure that we're always speaking one at a time and turn your mic on. And these are the mics that you have to kind of get uncomfortably close because our citizens at home want to have an opportunity to hear the discussion. Before we get started, council, I want to remind you that we have a planning and zoning meeting immediately following this workshop. So we will have a hard stop at 6:15, which there may be several people on this part of the room that are very happy that we have a hard stop of 6:15. But this is just a reminder that this is the first of several workshops that are scheduled. And it is going to be, in my estimation, one of the most difficult budget years we have ever done. And if we end up needing additional workshops, we will get those on the, get all of that on our schedule and on the agenda. Council, what you have at each of your tables when you came in is you had a copy of the agenda, which admittedly is pretty small. And then you also have a document that shows the holidays that are observed by the state of Texas, the city of Austin, and the city of Bastrop. Latest information, that was a result of, thank you, council member Rogers for asking for that information. And thank you, Madam Secretary. When council makes a request to the city secretary, when she sends information out, she always sends it to all of council. So council, you will recall that you got this sent to you on Monday, July 13th at 11:46. Thank you, council member Rogers. It was helpful as I was preparing for this meeting and going through some things. So council, you do have that on your desk. I'm going to skip over the work session and go to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, we have not received any citizen comments, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, well then we are, that action, that agenda item is complete. That brings us to our work session. We'll have a hard stop at 6:15. And before we get started, I want to make, I want to put a couple of things in perspective. Today is July 30th. This budget doesn't start until October 1st. This is not a finished product. This is the first step of a long journey. For the fiscal budget calendar, it started way back in January. We had a former city manager in January. Staff was working on it through February, March, April, and they had Mr. Jobe, they had interim city manager, Mr. Wood. And Mr. Jobe has been acting city manager for the last few months. And on Monday, they get a new city manager. So hats off to staff because there's a certain amount of work that has to be done. You guys had a good strategy. We'll be making refinements to things and making some hard decisions. But you've had, we were telling Mr. Jobe after the council meeting that our goal is to get him back down to one job as soon as we possibly can. And we're making a great stride with that on Monday. But I just wanted to personally thank staff for persevering and getting this work done. But make sure that the audience understands that we got a printout of the slides that you'll be looking at this afternoon. We, we're all hearing a lot of information for the first time. And staff, I want, I kind of want to talk to three different audiences. I'll start with the community. You're going to hear lots of questions and lots of information flowing and it's not a finished product. So it is, you are getting to see the beginning of the sausage being made. And sometimes that's not a real pretty process. To staff, you have been living with, suffering over, dealing with, talking about these numbers since January and these ideas. We are hearing it for the very first time. So we may ask a question and you may think, well, we already talked about that and we're not doing that because of this. Well, we have not already talked about that. So you may just put on your patience hats and just realize that we're seeing a lot of information for the very first time. And for council, I would encourage us to maybe let them get through what they've got to present. And I promise you, even with the hard stop of 6:15, we will make sure that everybody's questions get answered. But this really is an information gathering and we'll look forward to future workshops. So with that, we are moving on with work session. Item 2A, receive briefing on proposed fiscal year 21 budget assumptions for all funds, including new requests and optional funding sources. Council, Ms. Waldron passed out a copy of the slides that we're seeing. And Mr. Jobe is telling me that we'll get that in the Dropbox. So if you're a paper person, you will have it. If you're, and this is so you have something to take notes on while you're seeing it. But you'll also have access to it on your iPad like we do all of our other packets. And then you also have a trusty dusty summary from Ms. Waldron that talks about what all the requests are. And basically which ones they didn't fund and then of the ones they funded, how they're proposing to fund it. This is not a final document. This is a draft. But that's all of the information that you have physically in front of you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jobe and Ms. Waldron.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You're absolutely right, Mayor. This is a workshop and we're just here to lay out the facts and try to meet the intent of what we discussed at our previous meeting. And we all talked about the priorities and what was important. We did our best to go through the budget and what we have, reshape a few things, try to meet those goals. And this is just information. It's absolutely subject to change as long as it gets done by, before October. So that's really what our goal is, just to give you information. So, and we're going to start with this current fiscal year's projections, year-end projections. We'll do a property tax overview, a sales tax overview. We'll talk about the significant changes in the expenditures, how we funded those priorities. And then we'll talk about some personnel updates, a little bit on full-time fire because that's going to be a big subject. We're also going to talk about the VERF fund, talk about year three of street maintenance and how we funded that. Our suggestion for a limited tax note to fund several of these things that are on this request sheet. You'll notice there was 2.1 million in requests and about half of those were funded. And then we'll just have some more slides at the end where we can have a big discussion. So I'll try to get through the slides as quick as I can and then we'll flip back and forth and have a discussion because that's really what this is about. But anytime you have questions, just stop and we'll stop right where we're at and we'll ask. And if I say, hey, well, that's the next slide, we'll move to that one. Okay, so with that, I'll kick it off. Starting with the fiscal year in projections, as you can see for this current year that we're in, our total revenue was just a little over 12 million. 12,229,361. Our projection actually, but the revenue that we're going to bring in this year is just under what we actually proposed. Our total expenditures, you'll notice for the end of the fiscal year for this projection is the 11 million. So if you recall, we went back in January, we started talking about COVID and we started worrying about how things were going to work. So we pulled back the reins and we actually are going to spend less money than we projected because we didn't take higher certain positions and things of that nature. And so what we'll end up with at the end of this fiscal year is a fund balance surplus of 34%. So that approximately gives you about $500,000 that we proposed this year to get us back to the 25% fund balance policy requirement. And we'd like to put that into the innovation fund to pay back BP&L. So we borrowed money for BP&L over the last three years to make things happen. We want to put 500,000 of that back in the bank and pay them back since we did not spend the money. The total revenue for this year.
City manager.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So the 876049 excess, you're taking the 500,000 out of that and applying it to?
That's correct. We'd like to put that in the innovation fund to start paying back Bastrop Power and Light.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So Curtis can never tell me again that he hasn't gotten his money back. Try to take care of that. I think he remembers something from 20 years ago that actually he never got paid back for. So the total revenue again for this year, for the original budget was a little over 12 million. And the proposed for next year's budget is 12,495,657. That's an increase of 475,287 dollars. So from one year to the next, we will, we're projecting, that's not all property tax, that's other revenue sources. But we're projecting that there will be, actually be a 475,287 dollar increase from where we were last year.
Did you do it at the same tax rate? Is that what you assume for generating that revenue?
That's at the proposed tax rate.
Okay, never mind.
Nope, that's okay.
So that's, that's, you're going to tie that back to the tax rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So if you'll notice this slide, you had, this is actually a discussion that Tuesday night. We just touched on it a little bit and that was the assessed value. Whenever we did the current year's budget that we're in, the assessed value was, you know, 967 million or a little over that. What we actually ended up with at the end of the year was a little over 955 million in assessed value. So there was about a 2% drop in what was assessed. And that's either done by people file homestead exemptions, they're disabled, they're over 65 and their taxes become frozen, or they protest. So those are the types of things that they can do. And that's what makes that certified roll number change. So I was this many years old yesterday when I found out that the certified tax rule could change for something like that, right?
Me too.
So what that did to us was actually we took in less revenue than we expected. So, and if you'll notice, the bolded number for 2021, looking at the appraisals that we're currently looking at now, the assessed values. It's 967,902,273 dollars. That's actually less than the year before. So what we did was when there is, there is an amount of money that is under protest from the assessed values. Tracy generally takes 80% of that and that's where she pulls her number from. What happened last year was it went from 80%, we actually collected 68%. So what we did this year, well, actually the value that, let me rephrase that, we didn't collect 68%. The assessed value was 68% when we thought it was going to be 80. So we projected that we would perceive 80% of that value and instead 68% is what the number that it shook out to be. So the bottom line is, we were going to be a little more conservative this year and we're going to use, instead of 80%, we're going to use 75%. Those things are starting to level off.
So Tracy, I realize that some of that is people get, you know, turning 62 or whatever. But for it to be that big of a change, it's got to be people protesting in their values that has the majority of it?
It's all the above. But 7 million moved from the net value where you would apply it to your taxes into the freeze category. That's 7 million from one same tax year, but from one report to another.
Do you know what it was the year before? I just wondered if there, like that's.
How much it swung or?
Well, if it swung 7 million this time, is it usually around 5? Is it usually around 4?
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time this particular week talking to the appraisal district, talking to the tax office regarding these numbers that we were getting. Because we received the certified roll from Bastrop Appraisal District late on Friday. And I've spent this week putting them into the worksheets, running the numbers. There's several factors that go into calculating the tax rate that they have to provide us. To this day, I still am waiting on the county to give us the final number. So even what we're presenting tonight could change slightly. I don't anticipate it changing a lot, but it could change slightly because I'm still waiting on the final. There's like lawsuits, numbers that they've got to provide us. We don't have those yet. We have projections in here.
So, and another, if you look at that second line on there, the 2019 net taxable value went down 20.5 million dollars. We gained this year in, because we've been building like crazy, right? 22 million in new revenue, right? So there's 22 million in assessed value that we gained this year. If you think about it, only 1.5 million of that is actually what we can use.
That netted out.
That netted out, that's correct.
So there may be folks that are like, yeah, but there's.
They're building houses like they're not.
We've got all these new subdivisions, so, but the truth is, it has netted out. And we cannot not like it, but it's kind of a waste to have too much of a conversation because we don't have any control over this.
Correct. So that's, that's really what we're getting to is, and I'll go to the next slide. Actually, this is, let me back up one. What we're really getting to is if you look at the bold number, you can see that it's less than what we projected for last year's budget or the current budget that we're in. So what that means, even though we've had a huge amount of growth, the assessed value has stayed flat, right? Even though we've continued to grow, we continue to move forward with maintaining things, stuff like that. So with that, I'll get to the, to the big part that everybody's been waiting on. Your, your no new revenue tax rate for this year, the proposed year, is .5688. If you'll notice, that is above your current tax rate because the number in assessed value dropped. So the only way you could generate the same amount of money as you did the year before is to increase the tax rate by the, was that .4? .0004? Yes, it's a very minuscule amount, but it's just a little bit that you would have to do in order to stay exactly the same.
Generally what happens is you pick up a little bit, you keep the same tax rate and you've gained a little bit of revenue and you're at the same tax rate. And you're saying just to even stay flat, the tax rate would have to go up.
No matter what.
We are not setting a tax rate tonight. That'll be a separate meeting, separate public hearings. We're just talking about, this is just math.
This is just math. You're absolutely right. So with that, the voter approved tax rate, I'm sorry, so let me move to the proposed tax rate for this year. So what we've done in order to make this thing zero balance out with the improvements and that 475,000 dollars that we were talking about. Well, not all the revenue is from tax rate. It's actually, I'll get to that on another slide. But we're proposing a 0.5818 tax rate. That is a .0013 increase in tax rate. The voter approval rate that you could absolutely move the max to before you had to have a rollback would be the 0.5982. That is the highest you could go. The lowest you can go is the .5688, right? We're proposing something right in the middle in order to maintain what we've got. And what's important to point out is, is that this is the M&amp;O rate. While you could go up to 8% because of the disaster declaration, this is actually only a 3.6% increase over the M&amp;O rate, right? So that gives us right around that 3.5 number, which is what you could, you could go to anyway. And then your debt service, which makes up the other half of your rate, is the .1949. So, and that gives you the total of the .5818. So if anybody has any questions, this is probably the most difficult part and it's really hard to understand sometimes. But the bottom line is, there's a certain amount that goes into your debt, which is not impacted by the legislature changes that we had last year. But the M&amp;O, I always say O&amp;M, so the M&amp;O side is where you can do your increase. And that's where we need to find the way.
So this new rate you're talking about, the .5818.
Yes.
The debt service would stay the same?
Yes.
It would be the M&amp;O? And for folks watching, would you tell us what M&amp;O stands for again?
Yeah, so that's the maintenance and operations cost of the city. And those are the costs that are associated with personnel and things of that nature that you have every year.
Basically, it's the cost to run the city.
It is a reoccurring cost, that's correct. When we get to the end slides, we'll tie it all together. But the bottom line is, the M&amp;O rate was lowered a long time ago. Even though we built a brand new city hall, we lowered the M&amp;O rate to maintain things. And we increased the taxes, the debt side, if you will. And now that's getting ready to flip back the other way. So we'll follow up with that. Here's a great.
And so as you go through the presentation, council needs to keep in mind, everything else is built on this .5818. So if you're sitting here saying, oh, there's no way, I don't want to do that, then you just need to start thinking of what are you going to cut that you guys have funded?
Yep.
And if you see things that are cut and you think, well, wait, I don't want, that's really important and we need to do that. Realize the only place to go back to is this tax rate and raise that.
That's correct. And that's what, that's going to show you all those tough decisions in these next 10 slides.
Hence my opening comments of one of the toughest budgets that we will have done in a very long time.
So you can, you can look at this great chart that Tracy put together with the property tax rate and how it has stayed flat. I just, I'm sorry, I'm getting old and I can't see the screen. I'm going to look at my PowerPoint on the hand. Since 2014, we actually lowered, and I talked about that a minute ago, right? About 2012, the city really made some investments. They built this great city hall, they built the convention center, we did a lot of road improvements, quite a bit of money. And then you're, I'm just going to throw it out there, the council that was here before lowered the tax rate. But we didn't maintain the money to be able to take care of the roads in the city hall and things that we built. So now we're going to show you what that cost in this year's budget. And that's where you'll see why we're making this proposal. But this chart, I think, really does a good job at showing, you know, we've been flat for almost 10 years. And now you'll see this chart where it shows the current tax rate on your green line there. But the blue is the assessed values. So back then in 2015, those assessed values started to rise quite a bit, right? So they kept going up for the last five years. And you can see by this chart, just what we talked about, they're going flat. So again, we're just, we're just, it's just math, nothing else. If you look at the next slide, this is actually your property tax calculation. And what Tracy showed you here was where we get the assessed evaluation. But then we build our budget, this is the, this is the column to the left. We build our budget based on the city collecting 99% of that number. So whatever the assessed value is, we assume 1% of that's not going to be collected anyway. It depends on where you're at, different places do it different ways. Some use 98%. You just go by historically what you've collected. And then if you look at the properties tax distribution, this is what we just talked about. This is that M&amp;O rate at the top and the debt service fund rate at the bottom. And that makes up your .5818. Your next slide, because everybody wants to know how this impacts them daily, right? I think this is probably the most powerful and the most important slide. So the average homestead value in Bastrop in our taxable area is 209,000 dollars. If you take that 209,000 dollars you applied against the current year's tax rate this year, what we're in currently. You would pay 1,179 dollars in taxes for the city of Bastrop, right? What we're proposing for this year's, this next year's budget at the point, excuse me, at the .005818. That would actually have a small increase and you'd pay 1,216 dollars a year in taxes. That's a net rate, your increase basically per average homestead of 37 dollars. So it's about 10 cents a day. So for 10 cents a day, you get to keep these roads, you get to keep maintaining the streets, you get to keep taking care of the trees and then taking care of all your parks, that kind of stuff. The mowing that we do at the entryways.
Well, what you get is what's included in the budget. Because I don't want us to set an expectation that for 10 cents a day, you're going to get everything that you want. You're going to, you're going to get what we're able to fund and that's it. Because looking over this, you guys have made, already made some tough choices if you've already taken away a million dollars worth of requests.
Yes, that's correct, yes. So this is, you're right, we could not, everything will not be funded fully. This is a, this is a process that you're going to have to correct over the next couple of years. It truly is. I have an idea how we can do that, but we'll talk about that at the end. So for about 10 cents a day is what we're proposing. Per average household with an evaluation of 209,000 dollars gets this budget that we're talking about funded. Sales tax overview. So what I think's most important about this, and I could read through all the verbiage that's on there, but I bet you guys could glance through it quick. What's the most powerful thing on this page is the chart. If you look at the chart from 2012 to 2013, you can see sales tax has been increasing year over year. But if you'll notice, the last three, they're slowly starting to level out. So again, we're leveling out on evaluations and assessed value and we begin to level out on sales tax. So we've reached a point where we can't fully count on it to be growing as much as it has been. Because we're getting built out and that's okay. We're going to continue to grow, but we just need to make sure we protect. And we've talked about this in the past at other budget workshops. Sales tax can be volatile. We could have had a much worse year. Honestly, we had a great year, surprisingly. Even though we pulled back the reins and we're really worried about not increasing the, not getting the sales tax revenue we thought. We were actually pretty lucky. I don't think we took into account that nobody's commuting and everybody's buying stuff here. So something, lesson learned. So that's actually, if you recall from one of the first slides, because we didn't collect as much in property tax. Sales tax actually carried us over this year to meet the revenue projections that we originally projected. So what's important to also to point out though, in the fiscal year 21 proposed budget, the, and maybe Tracy could have to explain some of this. But the sales tax increase that we are showing here is only 1.8% over the current year we're in. Is that the correct way to say it?
Yes, it's just 1.8% over what we're projecting 2020 to end up. It's 3% over what we originally budgeted for 2020, but we're actually exceeding our budget, so.
It's a small increase and again, back to the, you know, none of us knew in March how COVID was going to impact sales tax. And honestly, if it, we don't know how it's really going to be for the next six months. So the only thing that you can do is look at the information that you have. And to Trey's point, there are many folks that are, maybe the budget money that they had to take the family on a vacation has turned into a trip to Home Depot or Lowe's or any of our other fine stores for home projects. And that's generating sales tax. And there may be a point that people are no longer doing that as well. It's very difficult for us to project what those sales tax are. But it's really important for our friends at home to realize the two major places that we gather money is either property tax or sales tax.
That's correct.
And that's why it is so vitally important that we all shop local and generate that sales tax. Because whatever we can't do in sales tax, it has to come up in, it's all a balancing act.
Yes, and if you remember, again, we talked about this in the past, it's generally, sales tax is one of our biggest revenue generators. That's not common in most places. So again, we're just slowly correcting that stuff. Again, back to those budget priorities, just to remind everybody what they were. And this is, this is where I'm going to say, I'm fixing to show you how we tried to fund these. It's also written out to the side there. Not all of them got funded clearly, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On this general fund, and I should have been quicker on the draw here. You say the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget amount of 5,236,932. Down here you have 5,266,932.
That was a typo error from one version to another. What, the 66 is what's plugged in?
66?
Yes.
Great.
The chart's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, excuse me. So again, our street maintenance program, again, we've talked about, that is an M&amp;O something. But this year, we're actually going to propose using some available bond funds that we already have in the bank. Old Iron Bridge, which one of the priorities. There's no budget impact to that at the moment, just because we haven't started. We just wanted to make sure, addressed it. That's not in this, it's a work, it's a work plan item, but it's not in this budget.
But we did hire a grant writer. And as we continue to hunt for grants, that's truly how we're hoping to. I don't want people to think that we aren't planning on doing anything. And I really, really appreciate you saying it remains a work item, but clearly there's not an extra 10 million dollars in this budget to do the repair.
Yes, that's correct.
Except, and I forgot to go back and change this slide after we covered our street maintenance. Because we actually will have additional funds sitting in the 2018. We did not need the full amount that was available for street maintenance. So there will be at about, I think it's on a future slide, that we will go ahead and budget in that slot for the Old Iron Bridge for the engineering if we move forward with that. So we will plug a number in there.
Well, because we're not going to get 100% grants, the grant's going to require that we have some engineering documents and some matching funds and some other things.
We still left enough money in there. If we get a grant to be able to do something.
Make it happen. Okay. Alright, thank you.
The, uh, full-time fire, we're going to talk about that. We applied for a safer grant. Uh, the master drainage plan, which we decided to fund this year. The Gill's Branch Drainage Improvements will not be a budget impact this year. But also wanted to make sure everybody was aware. Uh, we're still going to apply for a hazardous mitigation grant. We're working on that application. It'll be submitted in October. We still continue and at, I believe at the August 11th meeting, um, we're going to have an update on where we at, where the 30% set of construction drawings. So we're moving ahead. Um, so we haven't forgotten Gill's Branch. It's just not going to impact this budget here. Again, like the mayor said, there's not an extra $5 million sitting in this budget to pay for it this year. But we have, it is a work item. Um, the parks maintenance is not included. Uh, that would require approximately another $100,000 in funding. Uh, we did, uh, we are going to propose a limited tax note to take building maintenance to catch up. There's quite a big gap. Um, you know, there's, a lot of these buildings were built PD here and, uh, convention center, things of that nature. Were built several years ago. There's a lot of air conditioning units and stuff that need to be replaced. Um, so we're going to talk about a one-time limited tax note that catches us up.
Can you clarify for me please, the, on the park maintenance that's not included? I don't want anyone to think that that meant, oh, they're not going to mow the parks or do anything in the parks. When you're saying park maintenance are, you're talking about bathrooms and, and, um, new playgrounds? Give me, give me some examples of things that are included.
We build a 10-year parks maintenance plan that, you know, so say the playground, a slide lasts two years. So you plan on replacing slides. I've got to replace this slide in two years, this one in two more. And that kind of stuff has been built into a maintenance plan. And the maintenance for the parks have never adequately been funded. They've always been funded out of one-time money, um, in the past. So this year we're actually not, you know, we're going to hold off on one more year. Everything's in pretty good shape. But, uh, at some point, we're going to need to, to, to fund maintenance.
For people who watched the BEBC budget meeting, there was, um, a discussion and some just, some suggestions from one of the board members about some possible grants for some playground equipment and stuff. So we will continue to pursue that, but you're just saying it's not in here. Mayor Chris Nelson, I think.
Well, that's similar to what I was going to say is that these opportunities, especially having a grant writer in there and reviewing what grants might be available. Some of these projects that we're looking to defer, and I just, I'm really scared of that word deferring. Simply because we have an obligation to, to manage our assets appropriately when we build them. But these, that may change as grant opportunities become available and we take, uh, uh, we provide access to those, those grants or we gain access to those grants so that we can
Yeah, that's correct.
No longer defer. Cause that's, that's part of the reason that we're in the position that we're in. Is because we deferred these projects and now it's, you know, pay me now, pay me later, and we're at the later stage.
That's, that's correct. And, and I know it's been the position of this council, ever since you've come on, not to kick the can down the road, for lack of a better term. Um, so that's why we're making this small proposal. Again, you can't go higher than that. We showed you that as well, but that's a discussion that we can have at the August 4th meeting. So, um, again, building maintenance and streetscapes are not included. I think that's streetscapes and sidewalks.
Hang on real quick, Mr. Joe, Councilmember Ennis.
How do we, um, we have a long-term goal, I think is what you're saying. Maneuvering this into the general annual budget, right?
Yes, sir. So what I think is important, and I don't want to skip to the end, but you have a debt side of your, your O and M. You have debt, I'm sorry, on one side of your tax rate, you have, uh, maintenance and operations on the other. And it's important that the maintenance and operations supports the daily activities of the city. And then their citizens can come back in at a later date and vote on the debt, right? We haven't given them that opportunity. We've held the debt at a certain rate, but we've never, instead we've lowered the M and O and deferred the maintenance. So at, at some point, there's going to have to be a correction to where the tax rate goes up on the maintenance and operations side. And in about 2023, not still anybody's thunder, it's going to dive off on the debt side. So that is an opportunity to say, hey, now guys, we can stabilize the rate, take care of the maintenance and operations and make sure that it's 36, 34, whatever it needs to be. Um, and then they can vote on increasing their own tax rate. I think that's the goal here.
As long as we don't add more debt.
Well, that's correct. Well, but you get to vote if you want to add more debt and that's what I'm saying. So if you wanted to make a big decision and vote to add debt, you get your own choice to increase your own taxes. And I think that's important to local government. And to, I, I think that's where we're headed. Anyway, we'll keep moving. Um, some of the significant changes that are proposed, um, that we eliminated the transfer from the general fund into the, the hotel occupancy tax fund. Um, I know that was important to council. So we eliminated that. Um, we moved the right-of-way mowing from the hot fund. It has to go back into general. So that was an increase. Remember we talked about that 475? I'm showing you how we're eating it up right now. It's $171,000 in increase, um, for the right-of-way mowing. Uh, carts was a gen, was originally in the innovation fund. That is going back to the general fund. That's a $20,000 a year, uh, something that we do. Um, and then because we bought new equipment and we've set a goal to start replacing the equipment and make sure that we have money in this VERF and we don't have this dangling, uh, issue of unfunded liability, we're increasing the payments to the VERF $64,685 this year. Um, the personnel costs, we talked about this again. So for the full-time fire to be brought on, um, and we're applying for this safer grant, that will bring you 10 full-time firefighters. 10, alright. This helps with our response time. This helps with our safety. Um, we all agree that this is a great way to go.
I just, I know that Chief Rosales is smiling even though he has a mask on. I know he's smiling under his mask.
That's correct. Um, and that is, that is, that will be an increase of $71,700 if we receive the grant. Um, if we do not receive the grant, we've got a plan B that allows us to bring on six full-time firefighters and still maintain the hours and have somebody sleeping here at night. So our response time is still good. You just won't have the full staff that, that truly meets a standard, but we'll keep working towards that. Um, it's, it will be similar to the way it is right now. The only difference is the firefighters wouldn't be um, part-time. They would be full-time and they would receive benefits and things of that nature. So currently what we do, and we talked about this, um, there was a point where we had 30 part-time firefighters and the cost of those 30 and the cost of bringing on six full-time, the only difference in, that is about $58,000. So we're at a point where it makes sense to bring on full-time people. But if we get a grant and have 10, the cost will be a little bit more and it's $71,700.
I, I just want to remind council that we had conversations, um, one of the other risks of how, if, if we don't go to full-time fire, those volunteers can be told during COVID, you're not leaving. You are not leaving the station. Cause some of our volunteers are full-time firefighters somewhere else and they volunteer and went answer a call. So if they get all pulled back home and those are the only people that we're counting on, we can find ourselves without them. So for, and I am not going to say $58,000 isn't a lot of money because it is a lot of money. But it's, it is not compared to the amount of budget that we're talking about. And it's certainly not a lot of money when it's compared to knowing that you have a firefighter to respond to a call.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring your memory back to the, that fire in Tahitian. Um, when we finally brought on our first part-time firefighters that were spending the night there. Um, I can't remember the address off the top of my head, but they responded within seven minutes, put out the back porch. That could have been much worse versus their usual 20-minute response time when it was volunteers outside the city. So that's why we're doing it. It's important to the citizens.
Councilmember Rogers, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So the $71,700, whichever, that's what it will be without the grant, right?
With the grant.
That's with the grant.
We have an additional slide that lays this out in a few slides. It'll actually lay it out slide by slide, what we have currently. Do you want to go with that?
No, you're fine. I can, I can wait for that.
Okay, sure.
Now you're distracting my questions.
Sorry.
Um, as, as we move along here, if we have concerns and/or objections, tonight's not the night to do it. Tonight, we're just hearing what you're presenting, right?
No, if you want to say something tonight, speak up because we, we need to make adjustments.
If there's five people telling them, we are not interested in full-time fire, then she wants, there's no point in her still running that name.
I'd hate to see the five people that say that.
To, to your point though, Councilmember Ennis, some of it is fine tuning. But if there is major, wait a minute, I don't remember that day and I don't agree with that, that, that really, they're looking for major changes. It's a good time to talk about it.
Well, I want to go back to the, uh, significant changes proposed, eliminate general fund to hotel tax fund. And say that I have more questions about, uh, the first item on there. Repurposed into a proposed community relations department with an administrative and communications division. And have further discussion on that with our new city manager.
Oh, we absolutely will. So I'm going to have a slide in here that, that talks about it.
Okay.
Um, yes, we, we.
I just, we've had experiences where in the past where we've said, well, y'all saw it and you didn't say anything. And so we considered you approved it. And I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that that's not what we're doing.
Sure. No, that's, that's what the workshop's for.
All right, if we get the grant, how long is the grant for? Do you remember?
How long's the safer grant?
It's tiered.
You gotta get to a mic or you gotta use Tracy's mic or let Tracy answer that.
It's, it's over a three-year period.
So like they give us all one year, then it just trickles down?
So what they do is there's percentages in that, is that in the slide? Yeah, it's, it's certain matches. So year one has a match, year two has a match, year three has a, a match, and then year four, we take 100%.
Okay, thank you.
But each successive year has a higher, higher match required.
The first and second year are the same, 25%, so the same. And then the third year is an increase. And then the fourth year is a full match.
And what that allows you to do is bring on a full-time fire incrementally as you can afford it. Move forward. Um, also wanted to point out, not again, these significant changes. Um, we talked about the fire, but we also made quite a bit of reductions in, in staff here. So we had a, an additional planner that we removed, eliminated. That was an $80,000 savings. Um, we did elimination of the council liaison position and the part-time office assistant. Uh, we moved the receptionist and the executive administrative assistant to the city manager into the assistant, into the city secretary's budget. So you'll see some of those changes. When you actually get your budget books, you'll see some amounts that are moved. So we just moved people in the right place, if that makes any sense.
Okay, except he just said budget book. He's not saying you're not going to see it in October. He's saying after we do this, the first time we get our first draft of the book, you'll be able to see that.
You'll say, hey, why is this so much? And I'll say, well, because we added two positions into that or we cut one position. And I'm just going through some of the significant changes.
I just, when he said budget book, I didn't want you to think he's talking about the final one. He means the first draft. That's what he's talking about.
You say reduce the planning department by one FTE. Since this council has made, um, reorganization and/or, um, upgrading of our planning department a priority. What does, that, that doesn't seem to jive with our intent.
That was a, um, a planner position that was eliminated, a planner one. And it was, the, the purpose of it, I understand when they originally were hired were to catch up on, uh, records and documents. Um, we've done quite a bit of that. We've transitioned into some software that I think will make us more efficient, more effective. And I'm not sure that we needed a planner. I think we'll come back to you in the future with a different proposed job position.
In this budget?
In, in, it will not be in this budget. It will be in probably a later budget. Once we get a new director on and they really have time to evaluate the staff, I've got some ideas on how it should be. But a planner may not be the correct position for what we need, if that makes any sense. In order to make the department operate more efficiently, the way staff is there, it may have to be adjusted.
What I hear Councilmember Ennis saying is that if, um, City Manager Hoffman is listening tonight, that's going to be one we're going to talk about some more before we finalize the budget.
You got it.
Absolutely.
We've got to get that department under control.
Absolutely.
Exactly. And my question also on that was the fact that, um, it is a planner, not the planning director. At first I thought it was the planning director, but now you've made it clear it is a planner, not the planning director. Cause I was wondering, um, we can't eliminate the planning director because all the things that are going on in that department. So I'm glad that was clarified or I just misread it, I guess.
Yeah, the current, the current position has, for the current budget this year, has the director, which was a planner. You have the assistant director, which is a planner. You have an additional three planners. And I'm saying it may be better to have a, instead of a planner, have a something else that makes it work better.
Like a customer care permit liaison person might be an example.
Yes. So not to, not to say there's anything wrong with a planner. My point is we've established people in certain places and they were all with a planning background or degree in planning, whether it be master's degree or not. I'm not sure that's what makes the department more efficient.
Well, I didn't want the folks in the community who I've heard from, I think we've all heard from, add infinitum, uh, about problems, uh, say, what are they doing? They're taking people out of the department? I, I just wanted to clarify.
Because council wants to give that proper staffing to that, right? We can't say you get no staff and you got to fix the problem. So it, I'm sure it, we'll, we'll be discussing that further.
And again, some of the software will make us more efficient operationally. And it, we may not need that extra person is my point.
Great.
Um, so, okay, we'll move forward. Sorry. Um, we've actually proposed in this year's budget to increase the front receptionist. It's a 25-hour a week position. Um, uh, our city secretary would like it to be 40. That's an $18,000 increase. We know it all being nice.
I'll interrupt at that point. I agree with city secretary. That needs to be a full-time position because we're a full-time operating city.
That's right.
We need, need to have the doors open for our public.
Okay, but, and you know, y'all give me things and I read it, sorry. But on this piece of paper, it says 25 to 30. So is it going to 30 hours or is the 18,000 going? It's full-time. Okay. And I know there's lots and lots of numbers. I just wanted to double check. Okay, full-time.
That was the original work class.
Yes, and I'm supportive of that person being full-time as well.
So are we saying full-time being 40 hours or what? Okay, good.
So there would be somebody at the front desk all the time. And that's the goal, which I think you guys wanted to meet. Um, and that's an additional $18,000 a year.
And it, it sounds like, um, much like the planning, that, that if we wait later on or after discussions after Mr. Hoffman gets here, there may be some reassignments of task or whatever. Cause to, to justify why, why we would be spending more on that one particular position.
That's correct. It's not more an hour, it's just more hours.
Yeah. Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just going to say, I agree because, uh, we need someone there all the time at that front desk. That's our main contact with the public. And so they need to be there.
And it not be our city secretary.
Right, I got you.
Turns out she has a full-time job.
Um, the, the added, uh, we added this year, a proposed director of community relations. Um, split between the general fund and the hot fund, 6040. That would add $60,000 to the general fund. Um, health premiums went up 3% this year. That's $24,000. Um, and then a step for the employees is, uh, $79,000. Um, and this one's a little wordy, but let me just explain it really nice and easy. The, the, originally there was a, in the finance department, there was a finance director, Ms. Waldron CFO. There was an assistant finance director and there are three finance specialists. We eliminated the position of the assistant director. We currently have an empty finance specialist position. What we would like to do is add $11,000 to that and give Ms. Waldron an accountant. So what we've done here is said, you know what? This department needs an accountant. Maybe it doesn't need an assistant director. And we can gain some efficiency there. So what you would pay an assistant director is quite a bit more than what you would pay for an accountant. So instead of a finance specialist, we, we upped that to fill her need in the department. Does that make sense?
Yep.
When you say accountant, are you speaking of a CPA or, or someone with accounting training?
I forgot to speak of that.
So you're going from five people to four people with a little bit back, but not a CPA?
Yes, we originally had five people when I was hired. Um, and we're down to three right now, only because we froze the position during the COVID issues. Um, but now that we're reopening it, um, the position, the, the department needs an accountant. I'm doing all of your accounting for you. And I need that specialty so that someone can take some of that weight off of me. There is no assistant. There was just a big gap between myself and the finance specialist, and so that's what the request is for.
So bottom line, it's someone that can agree.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Are you applying, Councilmember Innis?
I'm sorry?
Are you applying? Is that why you were asking?
No, thanks.
Mayor Proton, though.
Maybe we'll go back to the previous slide. The 2.5 step, 2.5% step increase is based upon what? Is that based upon clear criteria? Is it regional?
It's our compensation plan?
Our compensation plan has a step of two and a half percent to prevent compression. What this is not is a cost of living raise. We stretched out the cost of living, yeah.
I understand, but I just, but that, that's a set increase that's built into our personnel policy.
Correct.
But, but what is it predicated upon? Is it predicated upon just automatically 2.5% increase in the going salaries in the, in the region? Or is it, I'm looking to provide some sort of criteria.
Yeah, our compensation plan is, is built that way. It's grades and steps. And the grades are 2% between the grades, and the steps are 2.5%. That's how the compensation plan was built. It gets upgraded ever so often when we do go out and do a market analysis, and then that whole compensation plan gets updated. So like, which positions belong into which grade? All of that's part of the compensation plan. So the 2.5% is just built into that, that plan.
But every so often, if we visit, it's asked whether or not it, it's given up.
If we're still in market with our rates and stuff, yes.
That's correct.
Councilmember Rogers?
So that compensation, you said that was in your policy?
It's, it is our compensation plan that we have adopted.
And where's that compensation plan?
It is, when it was updated, it was adopted. It hasn't, it was probably three years ago that we updated it.
Where is it, so people, so we can see it? Where is it?
We have it. It was not gonna be out. We don't have it posted out on the website, no.
Oh, I wasn't expecting on the website. But as we looked through the policies and we looked through the handbooks, I didn't see that in there. I didn't see any reference to it in a, in the personnel policy.
It's not in the personnel policy. It's a compensation plan that was, I want to say it was 2016, the last time it was updated. I'm drawing from memory here, but we can absolutely get you a copy of that. Ms. Cantrell has it.
We need to have a copy of it.
Sure. And that basically has a step built in for so long. And I want to say it's about every five years they go in and refresh it. So we're, it's, we are due for one to go back and check against market.
What is, goes into compression, then?
What I mean is, if you, well, we won't be the market rate. So if they don't continue to get their step, we will be below market, which keeps us competitive. For example, cities our size, they pay a police officer a certain amount of money. And if other cities continue to give their step, they're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna lose police officers who are gonna go over there. What we, what we'd like to do is continue the step so we stay competitive. And if we don't do that, that's what the compensation plan is built around, just to stay competitive.
Bottom line, it's benchmarking.
Yes, sir, there you go.
It, it's a little bit of benchmarking, but it's also back to what we're all, we need to call it what it is and speak truthfully about it. Every, the anticipate, the expectation is you are doing your job correctly. If you are not doing your job correctly, you are on a performance improvement plan, or you get an opportunity to seek your fortune elsewhere. So if you are doing your job correctly, everybody who's doing their job correctly gets an automatic 2.5% raise. That is what getting your step is, as opposed to a merit increase where you, as you tell someone you got five goals, and you met four of them, and I, I'm a manager, and I have a bucket of money, and, and I divvy up that money. It's, everybody gets a step. It's, it's, it's a way of doing compensation.
Correct.
The reason that you're hearing lots of questions about policy, not policy, and I also want to be very honest with this, did I mention this is the hardest budget that we are ever going to look at? And at the end of the day, it will be a council vote that says, we're funding this step, which represents 79, or we're not funding it at all, or we're gonna fund it at 2% this year. Because with COVID, there are a lot of cities that are in very dire circumstances. And so it's, it's back to balancing the checkbook. Your, your little kid who's now a teenager would sure like their allowance to go up, but if mom and dad aren't making any more money, their allowance doesn't go up. So that's, it's, it's just out there, and what you're sharing with us is, if we follow the currently adopted compensation plan, it is a $79,000 decision.
Correct, for the general fund.
Yeah, I, I want to go on record and say, I'm not opposed to the concept of step increase. I just want to make sure that we're able to provide the appropriate justification for a 2.5 increase. If it needs to be 3%, we'll have to provide the justification for that. If we can only justify 1.5%, we'll have the justification for that. I just want to make sure that, that we're exercising our due diligence when we exercise these across-the-board increases.
But you said something really important, because if we go back to our fiscal year 20 budget, there was a COLA and a step, and, right?
No, we only funded a two-and-a-half step last year.
But we, we have done those before.
In the past.
Yes, and so we need to make sure that we're out there saying, and I think COLA's been pretty negligent these days anyway, but that is, that is not in the numbers. So what you currently have baked into the numbers is 2.5%. We can have a discussion about whether or not 2.5 is correct. We can have a discussion about whether we're gonna do it or at all. But we can't say, well, pull the COLA out because it's not in there.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, we did not put one in. You were correct. Two years prior to that, there was a 4.5%, which was the COLA and a step. And we pulled out the COLA then in the current budget we're in now. And we're proposing the same thing, not to add it back in, if you will.
Councilmember Rogers?
I guess what my question was, you just said that we adopted this compensation plan. So is the compensation plan that you have something that the council adopted these steps, or this is just something you worked towards?
I believe it was brought to council when it was performed and adopted, but it's been several years. I'd have to go back and look at that. I don't, I don't do that. I mean, I participate in it, but I don't, that's why.
I was just wondering if it was something that we set as, okay, here's six years, and we, this is what we are agreeing to. That's what I was just trying to see, what we agreed to, or what's kind of expected, or that's why I'm just trying to see where we stand.
I believe that when we do those compensation plans, they are brought forward to council.
Okay, that's what I was questioning. Thank you.
I can't imagine that it wouldn't be.
They are. I just, I don't remember the last time we did it. You're right, it was, it's been within the last five years, I believe.
My phone just lit up, and our human resources director just sent it to us, I think.
Perfect. Because I just text her and said, would you please help me out? I'm stumbling.
And our, and our COLA, to be clear, our COLA increases are, are based on completely different criteria from the step increases. I mean, I would imagine our COLA increases in the past have been tied to the CPI, correct? Or the Consumer Price Index?
Yes, and the, and the.
As opposed to market analysis.
Correct, and the, and the step increase is a, based off of annual evaluation of the employee.
The other thing that's important for folks to realize is that last year in the budget, health, the health insurance premium decreased. This year, it's increasing. So that, that's a, you know, so last year, health insurance went down, there was no COLA, but there was a step. This year, there's no COLA, there's a step, and health insurance has gone out. So just, just for an apple, comparing apples to apples, I just want us to.
And so every three to five years is what Tanya tells me, and yes, it was taken to council. So we will bring you back a compensation plan in the future.
Hate to stay on this same page, but sometime during, during our conversations over, over the next several weeks, we're gonna be able to see a job description for the community services director?
Absolutely, yeah. I wanted to, so Mr. Hoffman and I have had some discussions about it. We want to sit down. I think he likes the idea, but first, we want to make sure we're interested in having one, so that's what this discussion's for. And then, yeah, we will talk about.
We have some definite input on those, that part. So I hope at some point, we, we can have a down and dirty discussion.
Yeah, and, and I've got a slide on what they're, what they're gonna do. So I think it meets the intent, and we're just calling it something different. I'll get to that.
I, I was just gonna bring that to you. I mean, you're, the slide says that you're, we're adding this director, but we're actually taking away a director, a hospitality director, is that correct?
So, glad you brought that up. There was never a hospitality and downtown director. There was, but it wasn't a funded position. So what we had was a Main Street director. That, that ended up with an increase in pay and managed, and then brought in some help on the Main Street level, right? And then when that Main Street, when that hospitality and downtown director left, those duties fell to the other assistant city manager, which was the director of public safety at that time. So you've never really had an apartment head that managed the proper communications to the citizen.
Oh, I agree with that.
That's what we're trying to achieve in this year's budget.
I'm just saying, but what we're used to seeing is a hospitality director.
That position wasn't funded in 20.
Oh, okay. I don't care about the funding. I'm just saying that we're, as a council, we're used to seeing a hospitality director as a title. I just want to make sure people realize that we're, that title will no longer be there.
And I think this encompasses really more than just hospitality in downtown, but as a communication piece for the entire city.
I think we know what the first two items are on the next workshop, and that will be the planning department, and whatever we, hospitality, community relations, whatever.
Call it what you want, yes.
Those are our first two workshop items.
That's correct.
That department has to be approved.
That's correct.
So by us.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm, I think, I'll go ahead and say, on behalf of council, and probably staff as well, I would expect that Mr. Hoffman will have a conversation with council members, have a conversations with staff, have, bring his own expertise and, and preferences, and, and we'll come up with something that's best for the community.
That's correct.
But we're agreeing, those are our first two next workshop topics.
We, we, it has burned into my memory.
But back to the, back to where we were, I'm excited about you getting your accountant. I know you need it.
This is the account, yep, okay, let me move to the next one. So to, to expand on the full-time fire. So now we're gonna get to each of those personnel changes that we talked about and expand on them a little bit. So we've mentioned, currently in fiscal year 2020, there's 8.4 full-time employees based off of a 20-80 hours in that pay period, right? They're all time, there's no benefits.
Can I provide, that's full-time equivalent, that's not full-time employee.
You're correct, sorry. Full-time equivalent, you are correct, sorry.
Andres would love to have.
Thank you for keeping Tracy straight.
Yes. It is a, takes a village, let me tell you. So the, the, again, you're right, we are, and now we are basing, or in 2021, we're proposing with that SAFER grant, is the 10 full-time employees, not full-time equivalent. And that's based on a 29-12 hours in that, with full benefits inside of that pay period. And that, in this 71-690 is the 25% match added under the grant. If we do not receive it, we talked about this earlier, we can, we believe we can get this done with the six full-time employees, the same 29-12, those six time, six full-time employee, six full-time, I'm gonna call them six full-time firefighters, right? That's what you're really getting. You're also gonna have the chief and the assistant chief, who helps with fire prevention, and he's the chief, right? So you end up a total of eight, and that's an increase of 58,856. Wasn't that easier when you started saying firefighters, oh, you know what they are? Okay, so the community relations department.
Can I, can I ask, why, why is, why is the full-time firefighter based upon a 56-hour work week? I, I understand, but that's, that's a significant change from a 40-hour work week.
Yeah, so it's based on the 56 because you average their, their time out. So you average it out over the, over the year, and it's 56-hour work week, because they're working 24s or 48-hour shifts. So rather than somebody coming in and working eight hours, they're working maybe a 24-hour shift. So it, it's the way that they, they calculate the built-in overtime, and they, it's, it's a calculation. Ask Tracy, fire department is the, fire department and the police department are the worst
Not worst.
On calculating overtime and calculating those hours. And so 29-12 is our, is basically what it comes out to working a full-time shift, 48 hours a week, or if you didn't.
And that's an industry standard for firefighters.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
FM, so we, we establish our, our work period for, for the regular employees. It's, it's a work week. For police and fire, it's 14 days. So they will, they, and, and so police is based on 86 hours. I just looked this up the other day. And fire is based on 106 before you kick into overtime. So that's why, even, the reason I put the, the full-time equivalents based on, you know, we were just basing on the 20-80 that we've, we've always been used to using, but fire's very different. And I think they're considering some of their sleep time, and their rate actually goes down because they've become full-time, but yet they have so many more hours, so.
And chief, are they considered exempt or non-exempt employees?
So they're non-exempt, and, and so this is all based off of FMLA, so the Fair Labor Standards. So that, all that is built in, so it has built-in overtime. So what they'll do is, we calculate their regular rate, and then they'll have an overtime rate. And anything above the 106 hours is their overtime rate. So they may work an average of, I think it's 100 and, is it 112? I, I, I have it in my, I have notes, but they work over that 106 very regularly, like, very rare. And then anything above that, like, let's say their normal shift, so they'll always have overtime. It'll always, there always will be overtime based on their 24-hour shift or 48-hour shift. They'll always have overtime, but that's built into their pay versus if they have a callback. Let's say we call them back for a fire. Well, that is now an overtime, and they'll have a higher rate. So it may be time and a half at a higher rate. And so that's, yeah, well, not really called a shift differential, but it, it's based off of the FMLA, what says, you know, 106 hours for fire.
It's not FMLA, it, FLSA.
FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, yes. But it, it's based off of that, and, and PD has 86. Their hours are different than ours, and, and they have a built-in rate as well, so. And we've calculated that into their, their benefit package when we do their salary. We calculate those rates, and those rates will be in there. So their, their salary doesn't change. It's just their hourly rates change. And then when they come in and they work overtime on a shift that they're called back in for, whether it's vacation or whatever they're covering for somebody, they get paid at a higher, so their salary may change at that point. And then we have a separate budget that's for overtime that we've put into the, into this already.
I'm good, thank you so much. You've had all.
It's fire and police, yeah, they're very, the FLSA, it's, it's very challenging, let's say.
I understand.
And Chief Rosales is able to talk about all that off the top of his head because he worked so hard on the SAFER grant, and they had to go through all those calculations.
Spent lots of hours, and then the FLSA has a class that you go to, and it's a week long, and it talks about all the ways that people have wait, tried to circumvent pay, and, and the cities have gotten sued over this. And so it's, it's very, I think Tracy was ready to kill me when I said, I want to go fire full-time, and she's like, oh. So it, it just comes with a lot of headaches with, as it relates to LS, FLSA, so we don't get sued in the long run.
And, and it's to protect the firefighters, protect the community, do what's right, follow the law, be safe. And I'm sure she meant figuratively that she wanted to kill you.
Yes, figuratively. She was gonna, she was fixing to correct me.
Yeah.
All right. Let's just move to the, the community relations department. So currently, the way, the way that things are handled in what would have been called the hospitality department before, was you had a special events and reservation department. It resided in the hotel occupancy tax, and it was, and it supported revenue that generates from the park rentals, special event permits, and then we continued to transfer things from the general fund. But we're not, we're, we talked about not doing that this year, right? So, and currently, the multimedia department resides in the hotel occupancy fund, and was partially supplied, supported by the general fund and the water wastewater and BPNA. So we were transferring in, we decided not to do that, and here's what we're proposing. So it's proposed, we eliminated the transfer of the general fund into the hotel tax fund. We moved the department back into general fund. We repurposed it into a community relations department with an administrative and communications division. And that administrative division, which is the director we talked about, 60% of that would be allocated to general fund, 40% to hotel tax fund. Yeah, there's a, there is a coordinator position that previously was funded to 33% with the convention center. So basically, they were also absorbed, 85% of the chief storyteller. um, and another fifteen percent allocated to Hotel Tax Fund. So the General Fund has taken that back, um, where it should be. Um, and this reflects a change in the General Fund amount of the ninety-four thousand dollars, right? Sixty thousand of that being Director.
I followed most of it except you lost me on the Convention Center because I don't think the Convention Center is.
I, it, I'm just trying to note that the Coordinator used to be allocated between the Special Events Department and the Convention Center. We are proposing to bring that a hundred percent back to the General Fund, which is, which is part of the increase.
And all of those changes cost the General Fund ninety-four thousand dollars, is what we're trying to say here. Um, but let's, yes, sir.
Extra.
Yeah. Well, extra to General Fund, but.
We were paying for it before, just out of, so.
So there was a transfer, but now with all of these changes, there is a net increase of ninety-four percent additional General Fund needed, yeah.
A, a net increase over all the funds.
Oh, into the General Fund only.
It's just the portion that General Fund is having to pick up.
No, that's what I'm asking for, is it just a ninety-four thousand out of the General Fund net increase? Or is it a ninety-four thousand over all, over all funds?
The ninety-four is just talking about the General Fund.
Yeah, so I'm gonna just say that we were creative in the past on how this was funded. Um, and we're cleaning up, yeah, jail game's not the right word, we were creative on how things were funded. Um, we think this is a better fit, that it goes back to the General Fund, it's cleaner. Um, what we had done before was they resided in that Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund and then we supplemented from the General Fund. But instead, this moves to General Fund and we supplement a true percentage from the Hotel Occupancy Tax.
I, I'm not being critical of that because that's something that our Finance Committee, uh, we talked about and we asked you to do.
That's right.
My, my, my thing, where I'm trying to get is it's a clean net ninety-four thousand, uh, increase in General Fund.
Yes.
Or is it ninety-five over?
No, in the General Fund.
That's ninety-four thousand dollars of less of the other places that things were funded. So, so the other numbers have gone down. It, it was funded at a hundred thousand, now it's a hundred thousand, but it's coming from different places.
Different buckets.
And, and as a result of that settling out, it is a ninety-four thousand dollar increase to General Fund.
Yes, that's, yes. Thanks for cleaning that up. Um, so to talk about the, the Community Relations Department and what we plan for them to do, uh, their mission is going to be to, um, you know, is to strengthen the, the communications, foster mutually beneficial partnerships and build a strong sense of community, which is what I think you were looking for in your Council Liaison and in your PIO positions and in those types of things. Um, so what they'll do is, you know, community partnerships and assets, a lot of what they did with hospitality in downtown, but what I see is you have a Director that manages each of those components. So they may have this Director that manages Main Street, may have this Director that manages the, the Multimedia Department. You may want to add something else, but as we go through communications, right, we just still have the Coordinator. Essentially, that Hospitality and Downtown Department, we're putting somebody in there to, we're calling the Community Relations Department, putting someone in there to run it and make sure that the communications and the expectations of the community are met.
It would be great, and I talked to Tracy before the meeting, if we had the new, if we had a, a org that represented these changes.
Absolutely, we didn't put it in the, we, we wanted to have this discussion first before we built in a, a chart for positions that weren't going to be funded. Does that make sense?
I have a question and it's, because I have to ask the, the, um, and I'm looking at Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Rogers. To be a part of the Main Street Organization, are you required to have a job that says Main Street Director? Are you supposed to have a full-time person dedicated to Main Street to be in the Main Street?
Used to be and.
You still will.
No, no, what I'm saying is, right now, we have a Main Street Director that has all kinds of other little hats. That used to be, and I don't, maybe, uh, Councilmember Rogers can address this, it was state regulations that it was set up that way.
And that's how it will be set up. So that's what we're saying, instead of, instead of the Main Street Director wearing a lot of hat, a lot, instead of the Main Street Manager wearing lots of little hats, we want to create a Director Position that manages the Main Street Manager, the Multimedia Department, the PIO, you, but you can start triggering as many Community Relations Divisions as you want, but Main Street will be under that Community Relations Director.
But, but my question was back to the, the state organization, the national expectation, they want a person that that's their forty-hour job. Is that forty-hour week job, is that, am I correct?
It's always been the way it is.
That was, that was in my mind and I just wanted to.
That is what it's required if you decide to stay in the Main Street program.
Right, and you wouldn't lose that with this, what we're proposing is somebody else to tell them what to do.
Before we meet again on the budget, can we have just this department, um, uh, actually laid out for us?
It, the proposed budget that will be in your next agenda will have the organizational chart in it, along with the proposed budget.
I'd also like to have this particular department.
Well, it will be included in that, if we're proposing.
That's not what I'm asking for, Ms. Waldron, what I'm asking for is a standalone of this particular department.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Just a little bit farther from the breakdown, we got it.
Great.
No problem. Um, so again, I think they're, they're, they're meeting a lot of the goals that you talked about, uh, public information, you know, social media, things you're, um, and really communicating all the projects.
Before we get off this slide, I, I think it would be really valuable to get Mr. Hoffman's input.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's no point in council reviewing in detail something that staff, and I'm not saying that you guys aren't, uh, he may be like, oh, this is the best thing since sliced bread. He's gonna make some input or changes to it. I'd like to see what, what staff comes up with, with their new City Manager before we spend a lot of BTUs on it. That's just a personal preference.
I wouldn't send this to you without it's in Burton Monday.
Thank you, thank you.
He's gonna be in on the conversation, he's probably taking notes as we speak, by the guess.
I, I just want to be, you know, it's a good use of everybody's time and not being critical of what you've come up with, just let's take advantage of that expertise.
No hard feelings here.
When we, uh, when we interviewed with him and talked to him at length, um, one of the things that impressed us was that he is a consummate communicator. And I think all of us want to see how this fits into his abilities and projections. And I realize you've had conversations with him, which we haven't since then, but, uh, we just want to hear it firsthand.
No, that's, uh, no, this, that's what this is for, to, to make sure, that's what the workshop's for, so we can have this discussion. Um, if we still want to take care of our mission in a different way, that's perfectly okay.
This is a great stab, this is a great start.
Yeah, that, this is a stab, there you go. Um.
You people with your stabbing and your killing, you need to get better adjectives.
Um, so, you know, you have this sheet in front of you with a lot more detail on it and it's the General Fund summary, the new requests and what was unfunded. This slide just basically points out, hey, the General Fund request, um, was a, you know, a little over two million dollars. Um, there's quite a few unfunded requests left, staff and a lot of other things. Um, but we think we've identified some funding in large portions, um, through other funding sources and we're gonna talk about those and then we can have some more questions. Um, this is the, you want to go over the VERF?
Yes.
She is so familiar with the VERF, let's let her do this.
Well, this is our Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. So the table just identifies, this is the lease payment transfers, so as we pour assets in the VERF, those lease payments will increase year over year because you're paying into the VERF for the replacement of those, that equipment. So the top is just showing you the increase from, uh, current fiscal twenty twenty to fiscal twenty twenty-one. But the bottom part is just talking about, um, some money that is available in the VERF because we did, uh, quite a bit of auctions this year and were able to put some money away. And so we are able to fund these three requests out of available funds in the VERF. Um, so that checks off at least two and a portion of one of the requests.
That's correct, that's, that's why we're putting into it every year. Um.
Can we, can, can, can we go back and I realize this may be nitpicking, but on the, uh, building inspection, is an SUV, a large vehicle like that really what's required or?
It would be a small SUV, like the Equinox that the IT Department uses, not a truck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Street Maintenance Overview, so, um, what we're gonna recommend is, is taking out this, this one point eight million dollar bond that we issued, the original four million dollar bond that we issued. Um, we had set aside a certain amount of money in that obligation to the bridge. We've still set back enough to manage the engineering if we find the funding sources while we're searching. Um, but we're recommending taking a little over a million dollars of that and funding certain projects through here. Um, so there's some, there's some drainage work that needs to be done on MLK if you ever drive down that direction. Notice there's quite a bit of erosion on its way to Gil's Branch, we'd like to take care of that in a couple of spots. We want to rebuild Arena Drive, which is actually a little bit of drainage. Um, if you tend to, if you've, if you have pulled out of Arena Drive onto Highway seventy-one, you realize that there's some work that needs to be done in that intersection. So I know we're gonna, we'll make notes and you can go drive by there later. Um, but there's quite a bit of sloughing off and drainage work that needs to be done to repair that, I don't think it's ever been reviewed. Um, we've got quite a bit of work and, and repair that need to be done on water and Laurel at that intersection. Um, that ended up not getting funded in this current year's budget, so there, we found a way to fund it this year so we can go through and make those improvements. Um, if you remember, that's kind of the entryway into Delgado Park. And so that street really took some bad hits with improvement infrastructure and it's in really bad shape, we want to fix that. Uh, that'll be an in-house project and then we want to fund our three-year maintenance program. Um, and that leaves us to seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the engineering on the Old Iron Bridge. Uh, the total for year three out of our five-year maintenance plan that we approved two years ago, um, is seven hundred and forty-four thousand, uh, seven hundred and fifty-four. This is just a quick overview, and I know you're gonna say some of these streets, but we've done a lot of maintenance on these roads. We have, but this is, we've sealed coat, we've cut and patched, and this is, this next year we come in and we put a chip seal down on a lot of the roads that we repaired over the last year, so it's following up.
Where do we stand on Old Austin Highway?
Old Austin Highway will not be chip sealed. We, we, we brought Old Austin Highway, if you'll recall, um, in to discuss, uh, having it repaired and re, rebuilt. Um, we could, we could, we could take a look at that and see if we could add it. Um, I'm not sure we can extend the life of that much longer, it's in pretty bad shape.
But at this point, it's getting nothing.
Correct, nothing more than it's received in this, in this year.
Currently today, you're done with what it's getting.
That's correct.
Right. And so basically, in twenty eighteen, we issued four million, we had, we had designated one point eight million for the bridge because, um, unknowingly, we had hoped that was going to be enough. We got a rude awakening when we did the original engineering, we realized that ain't nowhere near enough.
Correct.
So you're taking that one point eight million down to seven hundred and eighty thousand because you're trying to leave enough that you can do engineering that's required to try to have matchings for grants or in, engineering or whatever.
Correct, but not just let the money sit in the bank when we have other needs and needs.
And so this takes care of year three, it, with the exception of Old Austin Highway in our, what we, when we did that PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, and we came up with the Street Maintenance Program, we thought on July thirtieth of twenty twenty, the, Old Austin Highway would look a lot different than it does right now. And, and we all know and we don't need to rehash those meetings, but there, there just wasn't enough money to do that. So that we are not doing as a commitment that we had hoped that we could do. And of these projects that you're talking about, you're talking about using some of this, um, CFO, the Certificate of Obligation, to fund some of this, but that wouldn't keep us from applying for, uh, some of these drainage, uh, Texas Water Development Board Grants or whatever. And any grant that we could do either leaves more money for the bridge or allows us to fund yet other drainage problems because we know that this is not a comprehensive list of issues that we have to address across town.
No, you're right, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. This is just some of those things that we, that are really critical and we want to get funded this year.
Okay.
Um, so what is our long-term plan for Old Austin Highway?
Um, the, if you remember, we had it designed and we were ready to rebuild.
Oh, sure, I remember all those discussions.
That is truly what it, that's truly what it means, it needs to be rebuilt.
What I'm saying is what's.
Bonds.
But yes.
We'd have to, we would have to issue and sell bonds specifically for that because of the chunk of change that it is.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what he was asking you, is, well, where is the money gonna come from, bonds?
Yes, well, and, and that is a, yes, that's correct. We could do that. If you're interested, we could absolutely do that. Um, that will change your tax rate just a blah, but yes, we could do that.
Oh, I didn't mean, it's eventually gonna come from bonds, it could be this year, it could be next year, it could be when our INS gets down low enough that we can afford to do it, but there, there's not a secret kitty that's gonna pick up the fund, and I think that's what you were asking, right? Was what's, what's the plan to try to fund that?
When we elected to put it off after the huge increase in our, in our bid for it or bids, uh, we kind of said we'd do it in the next year or two and here we are looking at the next year and I'm just going, okay, what, what is our game plan?
So what we did was this year, we came in and made a lot of large cutouts to, and repaired the worst spots so that we could try to limp it along for another couple of years until that interest and sinking fund debt drops off.
You did a great job, thank you.
Um, so what we're proposing again is this, we'll go over the Limited Tax Note Overview, is to do a short-term bond for one million dollars, um, to replace some old equipment, provide for new equipment, um, and a few things like that and catch further building maintenance.
Okay, you mean, is that your list of the equipment that's, that you're talking about issuing the bond for, this next page?
Yeah, it's, it should be in your PowerPoint as well.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so yes, well, we'll, we'll replace, um, well, it's not just vehicles, but yes. Uh, there's digital record storage for communications, uh, walk-behind roller that needs to be replaced, it's older than twenty years. Um, there's a, there's a crew cab truck for the street, we've been replacing the ninety-nine model, a new backhoe, um, a tractor shredder. Um, we continue to pick up parks, but we're, we don't continue to increase in equipment or people, we're gonna have to change that. Um, the SUVs we talked about, um, and that also funds the Drainage Master Plan, uh, the Deferred Building Maintenance and the Public Works Facility has some mold remediation and repair that needs to be done, was not funded this year. Um, so that is, that would also take care of that.
Is your Deferred Building Maintenance, the HVAC stuff that I would have expected to have seen?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there's a lot of things that need to be replaced that are, what's happening now is they're breaking down in the mid-year and there's, they're not funded, so we have to pull the money from somewhere, bring back constant budget amendments, and this catches us back up. We may not replace it all at once, but we want to put it in a fund and have it there available, so there's no impact. I know we're getting close to seven fifty. So something just to, to do, considerations again, I talked about, um, no matter what in this fiscal year, the tax rate, just to, to, to no new revenue is the point five six eight eight. Um, we've proposed to you tonight the point five eight one eight. Um, your voter approval rate is the zero point five nine eight two. If you were, and again, I think it's important to point out, you're, you are a, you are adopting a proposed tax rate on August fourth. All right? Word proposed, so what you propose and what you end up actually adopting can be two completely different things. I would encourage you to think long and hard of at minimum doing the point five eight. If you're interested in the point five nine eight two, we can always go back and make corrections, um, because there's gonna be some changes as we continue to have discussions. But that is the max you could do and the minimum you could do is the point five six eight eight. But when you take the minimum, that ends up with, uh, cuts in the budget that you currently saw.
Council, that'll be discussed at length and you will be voting on that next Tuesday night.
Correct.
The proposed tax rate, it's on your calendar.
I just wanted to point out, it's proposed, it's not, it's because, because you will hear something when you propose a tax rate regardless of, of any, you're just gonna hear something about it. Uh, but it's, but it's truly not the one that you finally adopt, so.
Now, the slide you gave us that said thirty-seven dollars a year, that was the five eight one eight, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, can you pull it out of your head what it would be with the five nine eight two?
Oh, yeah. Well, basically each cent on the tax rate is approximately ninety-six thousand, oh, that you're talking about, yeah. Gotcha.
To the two thousand and nine, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, these are just on the end to, to make sure we, to bring us back to where we started, you can see how long it's been flat. Um, it's important to talk about, early into two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, uh, the city issued a great deal of debt to build these great buildings, but we've never set the M and O rate to take care of it. And it's unfortunate that it, it's coming on your watch, but it just is.
It would be seventy-one cents.
Seventy-one?
On the, oh, maybe.
Not possible. It would actually be like twenty cents a day, I think, as I'm running.
Five-nine-eight-two, that's twelve-fifty, and right now it's eleven-seventy-nine.
Cause she wants to know from what we proposed.
Oh, I was just saying, annual increase, seventy-one dollars, sorry. No, 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 no. So it'd be, it would be nineteen.
Okay. I didn't mean to slow us down.
Yeah.
It's two-hundred-and-nine-thousand times that tax rate. If that comes out to twelve-fifty, then she's saying twelve-fifty to eleven-seventy-nine is the seventy-one. And twelve-fifty to twelve-sixteen, it's another, what, thirty-four dollars? So the, what's in there is an increase of thirty-seven dollars a year, and that could go for another thirty-four dollars a year. You're up to a total of seventy-one dollars a year. And what's seventy-one divided by three-sixty-five?
Point nine, it's nineteen cents.
Nineteen cents. That's what I said. It's under twenty.
So it nearly doubles it.
Yeah, cause we, we're proposing about a penny.
And you said every penny gets you ninety-six thousand?
Okay.
So I understand this sheet, the grayed-out sections are the unfunded-
Councilmember Ennis, will you get into a mic so they can hear?
The grayed-out sections are the unfunded requests, and they're not added into this two-one-two-nine-four-six-four?
They are. No, they're in there.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I ca, I wasn't sure.
But it's a little bit of weird math, right? Because the two-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and four-hundred, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars is adding all of them. And for instance, under the firefighter, that means that the two-point-one million includes the fifty-eight thousand for six firefighters and seventy-one thousand for ten.
He actually put both requests in. We're gonna take one or the other.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it kinda throws, and so the fifty-eight is not funded, so that, the fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars is in the eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-six-twenty-one. It's in the gray number, but the seventy-one thousand is funded.
That should be the only, yeah, that should be the only one that's duplicated that way, but.
And, and, and really, the, the whole key to this is just to say, there was two-point-one million to start. We went through and, and vetted as hard as we could, but we think we picked the ones that meet your mission and your, and your policy decisions that you've been talking about in the past. Um, that's all we're trying to do.
So if we adopted, if council wanted to consider adopting a higher rate and, and you quote-unquote had some more money, here, here's the list of where that money would go.
That's where we'll start. That's correct.
That's kinda the conversation, and you can get a feel for, okay, well, if we did do that, how much would that cost? That's why you've given us this list.
Correct.
Great.
And, and it may be that, that, yes, correct. I won't even go further.
And this designated fund, that's the only thing I don't remember you guys talking about. The, for the solar-powered crosswalk partial funding, Old Austin Highway, that's twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred. What's the designated fund?
The designated fund is funds that we receive that are specific to something. And so there's a court fee that we collect. It's a child safety fund. Um, it just happens to be located in that designated fund. There's other things in there for police, fire, um, building, security, technology fund for the courts. There, there's, um, and it's one of your funds that's in your budget book, and it lists at the top, like, all of the types of funds we receive that are designated.
This is a great summary sheet.
So, so you're saying the twenty-four-five, I'm, perhaps I didn't hear you correctly. Is that part of the Safe Routes to School funding that, that's available through?
No, it's our, it's our child safety fund. It comes out of a court fee.
We collect it.
That we collect every, depending on what the, it's a court fee.
But if we looked at the opportunity of utilizing the Safe Routes to School program that TechSoft administers?
We, we, we have, yes, we have done that in the past. I have not submitted one for this particular project, but yes, I'm familiar with it.
But that's something we can look at in, in the future.
He, he's just trying to help you find some extra buckets.
Yeah, I understand.
Amen, absolutely.
Understand. With that, are there any more questions? Do we need to, um, I think we've wrapped it up. Like I said, just finishing notes. M and O rate, um, at some point's gonna have to be called up. We know that. We talked about it, I think, a lot. Um, hospitality and tourism industry is down nationwide, um, which is why we made some of the choices we did. And again, anything that we do going below what we propose is, we're gonna have to go back and do some cuts.
Yeah, so if, if you go back two slides, if you want to keep that flat at, at point-five-six-four-oh, then you, whoever's voting for that needs to come with the list of which projects that are currently in the budget that they are, that they want to take out. I mean, that's the only way to do it. It's gotta come from somewhere.
It's, it's a hard choice, but the bottom line is we just wanna come with some options and, and, um, I guess, it's like you said, pay me now or pay me later. Unfortunately, you guys got stuck with the later. Um, here we are.
Okay, I, I just had a question about the August fourth. I didn't see that on my calendar anywhere. I mean, is that something that came up that I missed out on?
It's, it's been on there for several months. It, it's a part of the fiscal calendar, and it's on the council shared, um, it's, it's on everyone's calendar. Correct, ma, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Secretary.
Yes, it is on the shared calendar.
Oh, okay. I was just looking at the agenda listing, and then it hadn't gone out that far, and that's why I didn't see it there. So, okay, I need to go back to my shared calendar then.
Well, and it was, I, I also talked about it at the mayor's report last Tuesday. It was part of the coming-up meetings as well, so. Sorry, but it, it's on there.
Okay, that didn't show up on my screen, but okay.
Okay, do you have, and well, I was gonna go around the room real quick. You guys have done phenomenal. Councilmember Jackson, do you have any other questions for tonight?
Yes, I do. I just had, um, I know that this, this, uh, calendar came up about holidays and things like that. Was there a reason why we have this or?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. As I explained at the beginning of the meeting, um, you got an email on July thirteenth at eleven forty-six AM from the city secretary. Councilmember Rogers asked for it, for just a comparison. And when the city secretary sends something to one council member, she sends it to all of us. And Councilmember Rogers had asked the city secretary to please print it out, so everyone had it. And these are the holidays that are built into the budget.
And, and I, um, when we get later on in the budget, there's, I have a suggestion with it. That was all, that's why she sent it out.
Okay, I, I do as well, and, uh, of course, as you know, the City of Austin's holidays have changed slightly, um, this week. So I was gonna make some suggestions on our city holidays and, um, propose some things to the council as we're going through the budget process, but I can wait until later on to do that.
Councilmember Ennis, do you have any?
I have one question. The, um, short-term tax note of one million, two-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-three comes out of that. Uh, if we, if we pass that bond, it comes out of the two-million-one-hundred-twenty-nine. I mean, that would-
It takes care of a million of those requests.
Okay, that's where I was going.
Yes.
That's my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Good job, y'all. This is an immense amount of investment for me.
Really clear. Just excellent job. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
A strange question. Does any of the CARES funding that's come available to us supply any expenditures that we've had to make out of our general fund that we might can project into the next year?
No.
Answer my question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it would be enough to, to know.
If there was something we were having to do that would be qualifying for the CARES fund, I don't think it would be something that we would actually have in our budget right now.
Yeah, I know. It couldn't be for capital, for large capital, but, and I wanna echo, uh, Councilmember Ennis's remark. Y'all really done a good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers, do you have any questions?
No, but great job.
Yeah, um, man, it is six-oh-nine. We're walking out of here with a really good overview. This summary sheet is fabulous, very, very helpful. Um, council, we've got some hard work and some hard conversations ahead of us. But, um, I think when we have those conversations, I know the council, um, I so appreciate working and serving with you guys because collectively, we come up with the very best decision for the community and staff. We can't make good decisions if we don't have good information. And so this, this very factual, clearly presented, concise, this is what it means, is just very, very much appreciated. So ex, excellent job.
Thank you.
All right, council, with your permission, I'm happy if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn at six-oh-nine.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Ennis at six-oh-nine, and we are adjourned. Good job, staff. Thank you very much.